All right, let's call this to order. Thank you all for coming. Do we need, I'll probably go through introductions again. I want to remind you, please sign in. If you speak, please identify yourself for the viewing public. And remember, there's still cards and the ability to ask questions of the board at a later date. So anyway, I'm Joe Winrick. I'm the chair of this board. And we'll just go around and introduce ourselves so that you all know who you're talking to.
First, I'm Trish Scott, at-large from Townsend.
You're in Jamaica?
I'm Bill Anton, the superintendent.
Beverly Long, New Fane.
Lindsey Burke from New Fane.
Dan McFadden, New Fane.
Mike Foley, at-large from Townsend.
Okay. Does anyone have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything we need to discuss or add? No? All right. Perfect. Any members of the public here to speak to something other than the discussion about, other than the discussion about pre-K that's on the agenda? Okay. Hi.
Jennifer Mahara Townsend. I would like to ask the board to reconsider their vote to move the sixth grade to the high school. I feel like you presented a website where you asked for feedback from the parents and community, and you didn't read the feedback that was posted on that website.
Okay. I was gonna read your email that I received as correspondence that basically says the same thing. So note that you also sent an email to me that was gonna be entered as correspondence that says essentially the same thing. Fair enough?
Fair.
Okay.
Hey, Joe?
Yeah?
You were asked if there was anything to add to the agenda, and I'm not sure this is something to add to the agenda, but it did occur to me that the regional advisory board for the Career Center
Mm-hmm.
has not had a representative on it for a very long time. And
I've been occasionally.
I was gonna say, are you going? Because I get the emails, although I'm not a representative on it, but I get the emails for it.
I'm going to 23rd.
And I guess I feel, I just want to bring it up as a thought. I don't know whether we, I don't know whether we want to add it to the agenda, or whether we should be talking about it at Leland and Gray, but we never seem to
Well, we can certainly put, I'll put it on under new business. We can have a
Or you can even put it on the next agenda. I'm fine with that. I'm just feeling like we need to have a conversation around representation from this valley and Leland and Gray, the students who are heading down to the Career Center or looking at the opportunity to go to the Career Center. But we should be thinking about that and having a representative on that board again.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Back to Ms. Meeger's request. I'm not sure how that actually happens. I mean, there is a, there is a vehicle, a motion to actually reconsider that can be made by the side that, the side that prevailed in that, should they want to. But other than that, I'm not sure
A petition by 5% of the voter, 5% of the voting population can sign a petition to call for a special meeting and a special vote, whether to override the board. That can be done. We take some language on top of the person, but I personally, I might add to that. I personally feel I've gotten some emails myself from people that did not understand why this board, that was going into, after listening to people's questions, the board itself looking at a plan for the first time, could turn around and just vote, yes, we're gonna do this, to a haphazard plan, in my opinion, which that it is, because there's too many we don't know yet until it happens. So, you know, I'm gonna paraphrase Abe Lincoln when he said, you know, you know, we're a government for the people, by the people, of the people, of the people by the people. Well, we're that kind of governance. If our community's telling us they don't want something, who are we to turn around and tell them, well, we want it anyway?
Well, I think
You know, well, no, that's, just, just, by the way, Abe Lincoln stole that.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, yeah, some of the feedback I've been getting, you know, goes with that, too, of, you know, they feel like our due diligence, we didn't do it in that case. But I also just want to address that all summer long, people have been saying, on this board have been saying, well, if they don't like it, they'll vote down the budget. But so say that happens, say they vote down our budget, then what's this board do? Do they then say, oh, well, they must not have liked school choice? I mean, they might not have liked the sixth grade move? Or, you know, like, I have a hard time believing that just because the budget failed that that would be then reconsidered.
We would have to see. I have gotten feedback, both positive and negative, on the move. I've heard of, I've also heard of people who are really excited by this prospect and agree that it's a great move for the kids and, you know, have applauded the decision. There's feedback on both sides. You know, I think that the, you know, even in the emails that I've received, you know, there seems to be a lot more passion behind the negative than there does behind the positive. The positive is kind of like, oh, that's great, good. But they, since it's done, they don't see a lot of reason to continue to push for it. It's just a done thing. Versus the people who feel that it's not something they're interested in are very passionate about it. You know, I would, if we receive a petition asking us to do something, I would, you know, certainly act on it. I don't know if there's a motion to reconsider. Come on.
Just, just a point, I just, you know, I hear a couple of people over here reviewing a couple groups saying, oh, yeah, we got, we got, we got feedback both ways. We got feedback both ways. Well, for somebody that's passionate about their feedback work that was for it, there was only three positive comments on the website. So, you know, I'm sorry, but that's the information that we are given at the time of the vote, not what happened afterwards. People told me it was a good move. And people told me it was a bad move. It was split. You can't, you can't say that, because you made a decision based on the information you had at the time.
That's correct.
And the information you had at the time was, most of the people were against it, about, was it almost 10 to 1?
Yeah.
And that's the information this board got, not including what they heard on the side. Now, I heard two good comments that weren't on the public, weren't on the public forum. I've heard 18 bad ones. So I don't see how, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe I'm living in the wrong neighborhood or something. I don't know. But it just doesn't make sense to me that everybody made a conformed decision on a plan that was presented for the first time, and they said, yes, this is the plan, this is what we want, before they even looked at it, dissected it, digested it. You know, personally, I think it was, like, shoved down. It was just regurgitated, because it, it was a hasty decision, just for the fact of not, and that's not, I'm not saying whether I'm for it or I'm not. But my, my personal opinion is, I am gonna have a bunch of fifth graders that were looking forward to going to Montreal, you know, you know, that aren't gonna go. And they've been waiting five years to go, and now they're not going.
I don't think that's, that's not been said.
Well, wait, wait. One of the things for equity up there was, you know, Montreal trip for the sixth graders at New Brook. So what did you just do in New Brook? Either, either you're gonna have to have it up at your new school, or you just took the equity and instead of adding to that equity that everybody gets the same, you just took away from one school.
Nothing's been taken away.
The board does not run a school trip. The trips are run by
And then you also have, wait a minute, you also have
Ken, can you let her speak? Just don't run her over. Thanks.
She wasn't recognized.
Neither was Ken, but we'd gone past that.
Oh, I think I was right.
All right. I don't, I don't see a lot of purpose in, in the infighting. I mean, there's no decision about a trip. Obviously, the trip is a very valued piece, both by board members, by administration, and by, by students.
I'm not just talking about, I'm talking about, what about the spelling bees that we have at each elementary school that, you know?
Why would they not continue when the, if the sixth grade went to middle school?
Why? Because then what are you gonna have, all the sixth graders compete against themselves in the same classroom?
I
The GOV. Just, just other aspects of what goes on that, that, just, just throwing that out there. But you guys will do this in the plan, right?
Those are not board-level decisions.
So I'm done, you know? That's all I gotta say.
Okay.
For now.
All right. Anything else on that, folks? Thank you. There is one other piece of correspondence. I don't think that person is here. Basically, I received an email from, I believe she's a Townsend resident, who, who says that she's appalled at the thought that Drew had called for this vote, knowing that two members on this board were not supposed to vote. It seemed like he has an agenda fulfill, to fulfill, pushing it through the way he did. She felt that the community should have been given the opportunity to review the proposal, read it, think it over, and then come back for a vote. Certainly not the way it was done. And then she opines that it was an illegal vote. The only two things that I want to speak to on that are that the community wasn't gonna ever, I, I'm not sure if she's thinking that the community somehow voted on this, but it was always going to be the board's vote. And the vote absolutely was legal, because there was a quorum present and acting. The Wyndham member, by the Articles of Association, is prohibited from voting on anything that relates solely to elementary school, which is the sixth grade move decision. And Christina Robinson was waiting for a waiver from the Agency of Education, because she's a soccer coach at Leland and Gray, and you can't be employed by any of the schools in the district and serve on the board. She has since received that waiver, so she can now vote again on the board. As to the rest of it, I just wanted to clear up those technical pieces.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, getting back to that
Your name for the camera, please.
Tina Mills, Brooklyn. So getting back to the people that can vote and can't vote because of their connections. So is it, it's okay for spouses of, of teachers to vote? That's, there's no conflict of interest there?
It depends on the vote. Spouses of teachers are not allowed to serve on any negotiations committees, vote on contracts, do anything that directly affects the teachers, but they are allowed to serve on the board.
They can serve on the board, yes. Like, if they're allowed to vote on the sixth grade moving or not, if they have a spouse as a teacher in the district?
Not a conflict.
It's not a conflict.
Just say that.
Go ahead.
Typically, conflict would, it would require, the conflict is typically around pay. You know, whether you're going to benefit by, from your vote financially, you or your immediate family members.
Directly, not in a roundabout way?
Right. This is law. I don't know if you have anything to add, Bill, but
Bill? You looking for the policy there?
No, I was trying to think if I had it in my book.
It's not policy, it's state law.
State law.
I would just go with what Emily said, that usually, I mean, anytime it's happened for me, it's all about money.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any correspondence they received that they felt is board-level needed to share? All right. Onto the early learning discussion. It says possible action. It's not even scheduled to be a vote tonight. That's scheduled for the next meeting, but it's really a discussion tonight. You know, I, Ken started talking about the different equity pieces. We can start there. I know that during our retreat, we talked about the, you know, there was, there were some pretty clear inequities in the early education offering amongst the three elementary schools, in that, you know, two of the schools actually had in-house full-day pre-K, and, and New Brook didn't have the space and was able to offer the 10 hours through the state voucher. Pre-K values are all the way over on the left. We identified as values that full-school day offered, you know, quality early learning was a, was a value, and that we wanted school resources readily available on-site. We value transportation so that these kids can get to that, and also the play-based outdoor focus. So, you know, we want these kids outside, fresh air, playing around, learning, you know? So I don't know where we go on that, how we, you know, I, I'm not sure where to start other than that's sort of our values. And, you know, I know that with the, with the sixth grade school going out, there's now room in some of those schools to expand our offerings to all the schools, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, on that, on that topic, I believe one of the things my principal said was, we're gonna have our speech and language people shoved in a closet this year, so now we're gonna move pre-K in, so that we can shove the speech and language people back in the Just throwing that out there for you. That was one of the reasons that was, you know, moving the sixth graders up there would be a wonderful idea, was there'd be room for a pre-K, but yet, or we could have our speech and language people come out of the little cubby they're in right now, which actually it is. It is an old janitor's closet that their student speech and language out of in our school.
Well, we could certainly talk to, you know, if, if we decide that we want to actually offer full-day pre-K in all the elementary schools as a, as a, you know, as a way of doing this, as a way of dealing with our early education, I think one of our next steps would be to go to our administration and say, okay, you know, tell us how that works. You know, Townsend has it now, and I know Townsend is piloting younger kids even. Jamaica has full-day four-year-olds, but that's it. And New Brook has just the voucher system. You know, obviously, we'd want to see what, what that's gonna look like in New Brook as well. Is there space? And certainly, the superintendent, and the principal, and anybody else that needed to be involved in that decision would be involved in it. And is there space is a, is a concern.
If this board could build this addition up to the school, it would be nice.
Exactly. If that would be what the administration proposed, we could take that up. Sure.
Anyone else? Anybody have any comments? Bill?
No, I mean, the reason that you guys have this is because at your retreat, you guys identified three areas that you wanted to focus on and prioritize during the fall discussions. One was sixth grade, one was school choice, and one was early learning. You're now at the, the third one of those two. You have a subcommittee for school choice that is meeting on a regular basis. You've made a decision about creating a middle school at Leland and Gray. So now you're at the point of having a discussion about, you know, those are your values for early learning. What, what does the board, you guys can direct me to, to do any work or background or work with the principals to give you guys some ideas or options, but, I mean, really, it's kind of an open-ended thing of what action does the board want to take or not take based on what you guys have identified as your pre-K values? And what, how do you guys want to move forward?
You should survey the parents first to find out if they even want one.
Sure. Whatever you guys tell me to do.
I think if you're gonna make a step in that direction, that should be the first logical step, because they might just want choice in New Brook and Brooklyn.
Alicia?
Just to open up some tangibles, I called the WCSU earlier based on a question that was asked of me from some of the constituents. And if we, it's to my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, if you found out more information, that if we offer a public pre-K all day, we still need to honor the vouchers for the private as well. So people would still have, if they were, they would still have choice. So I didn't know that, that was a question that was asked, so I thought that's a case of the breakthrough.
Yeah, it's true of everyone.
Okay.
Lindsey?
As far as equity goes, I think it's worth having the conversation of whether it is equitable to have, whether it is or isn't, to have, because we have choice to say that, okay, well, if you want pre-K, you have to go to Townsend. We have said we will have choice, so that's already going to be an option. And is that an equitable choice, or does it have to be in every individual building to be equitable?
That's something the board needs to wrestle with, absolutely.
Emily?
So I just want to make a statement about my, I will go so far as to say, my passion around early learning opportunities and childcare, frankly. We are not offering childcare, it's not our job, but they are directly linked when it comes to these early ages. And I believe pretty strongly that our children benefit from quality programs in those younger years. So whatever we can do to help grow these programs across our SUV and across our state, I think is a positive thing. I'll couch that with concerns I have about heading, heading into a very academic pre-K program. I think that we need to be very careful that we don't turn kindergarten into the new first grade, or pre-K into the new kindergarten, that type of thing. I believe deeply, and I think it was my words, that put play-based and outdoor-focused education under that.
That was a team effort.
I think we all did agree with that, is why I came up there. And so I think that's really important. Equity is the key, I think, to this, really. Do all children have equal access to, or access to quality programs? And the 10 hours a week has clearly been a challenge, as far as the state law, which is Act 166. It is being reviewed right now. There's, it's been reviewed, frankly, since it began. And it's only had one year of full implementation, the program, even though it passed before I ever got into legislature. It's been a very hard rollout, and there've been a lot of challenges. But 10 hours seems to make it much more challenging for our families and for our students to be able to access programs, because, you know, you're talking either two hours a day or you're talking, you know, every, every center or school has a different option. And so when parents are working full-time, which many of them are, they can't just access the 10 hours very easily without finding some form of transportation. So those are, those are the keys, I think, to it, making sure that our children have access to it, especially the 10 hours. I will continue to advocate for more than 10 hours, but I also recognize very clearly the cost of expanding the program. And I would just caution our board and our communities to realize that this is an ongoing conversation, and we may see changes come, even from the state on this. It's an important, very important conversation.
Lindsey?
Sort of to piggyback on what you were just saying, I, I think that as far as preschool and having access to that, access is very key, but also that every, there, I personally think that a lot of, having different kinds of preschools is really important, because especially for really young kids, how they are approached matters a lot, way more than in kindergarten, way more than once you hit elementary school. And different things work better for different families. And I think that families shouldn't, should, should get to have a little bit of say as to how that approach, what approach works best for their kids. I don't think it's as cookie cutter with these, with younger kids as it is with older
True. So now we have full-day public funded in Jamaica, and we have all-day public funded in Townsend. And if they, those families choose, they can take their 10 hour voucher and go to a program of their choosing. In New Fane, a family wanted all day. Who funds the remainder?
The family.
So right now, we have a financial burden on the family in one town that is not consistent in financial burdens in the other towns.
And that's why they
That would be inequity.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we should really focus our time, is on that four-year-old pre-K equity, whether we do that through opening up the two programs that currently exist, so that families from New Fane can, without tuition dollars, send their four-year-olds their programs, or opening a program in New Fane that is accessible to New Fane students. I think that's a good question for, you know, like, again, how much interest do we have? Are we talking about a need for an entire class? Are we talking about one or two students that would be integrated currently into one of the other programs? But I do think we need to address the inequity.
Somebody up there first?
Leanne Gilson, Brooklyn. Going off what Lindsey said, with the different preschoolers needing different learning styles, different approaches, you know, has there been any consideration, and this may be even a stupid question, to tuitioning preschool elsewhere rather than doing it in-house and opening up more choice that way? Full-time tuitioning, not the voucher system.
I don't think there's been any discussion of it.
What would, what would that look like in terms of every kid gets your dollars and you can take them?
It would be expensive, more expensive than current.
What it is now. Who wants the 10 hour?
Well, right, now you get 10.
Right.
But is the value of the board, we want, I, I don't mean this the way it's gonna come out. Do we want, but do we want every kid to have what's really uniquely best for them, which may not be what's offered at the elementary school? I know, that sounds harsher than I mean it.
Do you mean full-time? Do you mean, not, for every, for every
Just piggybacking on what Leanne was saying, that, that's, that's the question, I guess.
If I can just respond to that.
Yeah.
The key is quality programs. It really isn't relative to whether they're in school or whether they're not in school. The key is quality programs, and I'm committed to making sure our kids have access to quality programs. So I don't, there's, there's good ones in schools, and there's less good ones in schools across the state, and same way, private, so
I just, I think you're gonna come to a spot where the program that you might most desire for your child is going to be far more expensive than the in-house option. So whatever, I mean, I just look at, like, and this is, might be a bad example, but kids going to high school, they get a certain amount of money from the state that says, this is what the state will give you to go to high school. Like, my kids were just in Wind Hall. They get money from the state to go to BBA. And that's their school choice, so that's where they go. But if that got taken away from them, we as families would have to pay the difference for BBA. So we would have to pay the $3,000 further than what the state offers for our kids to go to BBA. So I think that you would probably come across that when you start looking at giving equity to the kids going to these other preschool programs, because you're gonna find that some of these other programs are far more expensive than what the tuition is for the in-house pre-K. So, I mean, I don't see where it's not an option to do that, but the families are still gonna be making up the difference to find that equity. Do you see what I'm saying?
Go ahead.
So, when we're talking about equity, I love that you're the guest at the box. It's kind of where I like to live. And we did make mention of bringing everyone as a, with school choice, so moving, like, all of this group into one school. So I think it's interesting that you bring up that they could choose to go to the Townsend full-time as part of that equity. I also think that we have some lovely private pre-K, private early learning pre-K providers here, and I've had very interesting discussions with some of them, and I, I think it really helped the board, you know, straight from them, what they do with the 10 hours and how their programs run, if any of them would like to go.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from both private and public. Actually, Drew, you were next, I know.
Just a couple reminders that we really do believe transportation is important. So during this discussion, we talked at length about transportation and making sure transportation was available, especially because of some of our families that don't have the ability to get their younger students Younger students, two pre-K programs, those very programs that we're talking about. And we also talked about how important it is to have those school resources there for assessment, early intervention for special ed. So those are two things we spent a lot of time talking about that we decided is really important to the board.
But on that note, it's different in both of the existing pre-Ks right now. Right? One is three and four-year-olds, and the other one is just four-year-olds. You ride the bus, correct?
One is a pilot of three-year-olds, right?
Yeah, Townsend is a pilot of three-year-olds this year, but they're both full-day, real four-year-olds.
Do three-year-olds ride the bus in Townsend?
No. Four-year-olds can, but three-year-olds has to be something.
I believe they ride them in Jamaica. Four-year-olds ride in Jamaica.
I think they can, by law.
They can.
But the third, three-year-olds...
They don't ride.
No, no, no. No, three-year-olds are on the bus.
Only fours, and that's only in one town.
And two towns.
Two towns.
Both programs have four-year-olds on the bus.
But I remember hearing something different when we were discussing this. Go ahead.
No. You had your hand up.
So Tina Bell's Brookline. I am the owner and director of Sunny Lane Daycare Center and preschool in Brookline, and we have pre-K programs.
Are you going to do the whole programmatic thing now?
I don't need to, whatever you want.
Well, because I was going to say, I actually think it's a really good idea, and I suspect the board will actually support this. I would say, I would invite you back at the next meeting with the other private daycare, other private preschool providers, as well as the in-house people, to talk about it all at once so we can assimilate that whole information. And rather than have you do it twice, I'm just like, is that something we're going to do?
Well, I, I just started very, there was a few short comments that she made about what she did with the 10 hours and how she actually blossomed that into 12. I thought it would add to the richness of our discussion that we're having right now.
Okay, so I have a question.
Sure.
I would like to be recognized for a second. So does that mean that on this agenda, we can cross off this possible action thing?
Yeah, I already did. I said that was, you know, we weren't, we weren't, we're not voting this tonight.
You said we weren't scheduled to, is what you said. You didn't say that you were taking it off.
There are no plans to vote tonight. If someone makes a motion, obviously we'll have to deal with it, but there are no plans for a motion. So do we actually have, do we actually, is, is the board interested in having that happen at the next meeting?
Yes, I would like some public input.
Yeah, straw poll here? Not public input, input from the educators themselves.
Yeah, the public, yeah.
Public and private.
Public and private educators.
The one who wants to come.
Okay, so bearing that in mind, please, go ahead and say whatever you want to say, but...
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to say, we've, we've been with school for a couple of years now under the contract, and we have licensed teacher, and we call the rules and regulations of the school district. We do a lot of the shared trainings and those types of things. We have a pretty good relationship with Scotty, I would say, with the kindergarten teachers. And we have found that 10 hours was not enough time. It's just not enough time, because you have to figure out, how do you get those kids there? You get them settled. If you want to do anything to go on the field in the community, by the time you get them loaded on the bus, go to the place and back, their parents are already there to pick them up. So our program, what our program has done is we do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and we do 12 hours a week. So, and that's just on us, because we feel that's what's best for the kids. They can go on field trips, and we also feed all of our kids before they leave, and that's all included. Parents don't pay for field trips, they don't pay for food. With the kids that we have and the group that we have, we feel that nutrition's really, really super important. So all of our kids are able to eat breakfast, snack, and lunch from our publicly funded. We have others for other kids as well. But it was really important to me that those kids were able to be able to go out in the community and be able to have a meal every day, or two meals with us, actually, two meals and snack every day that they're with us. So all of our kids that come to our center, it's 35 weeks, they get two extra hours a week, so 70 hours a week, 70 hours a year per kid that Sunny Lane donates to these kids that we don't get compensated for, because it's, in our opinion, it's what's best for the kids, and it gives them many more opportunities, and you just feel like it's a better thing. So it's what we've been doing now since we've started it. We did go to a board meeting, I don't know, Canada, it was a year or two ago, where the other preschooler and myself did a whole show and talked about why we thought we needed the hours increased, and what they could get, and the early intervention, and, you know, putting the money in the early, early years would, would be definitely a cost, but then later on, because they've had the early intervention, you would see those costs decrease, hopefully. So we talked, we did a nice thing, but it was, it was told that we, they weren't able to do it at that time. They loved the idea, they appreciated the thought and the gesture behind it, but it was not something they could do at that time. It was a year or so later that all of a sudden we had these full-time preschools in Townsend. I don't know how much Jamaica's been doing it, so I can't, but I know Townsend came full-time after that. And that has been my, my question is, if, if a Brookline student, somebody who lives in Brookline, if they have school choice, why can't they choose to come to Sunny Lane full-time? They might have a one-year-old that they need care for as well, so they could drop the one-year-old off and the three-year-old off in the same program. They don't get up to 5:00 at night, so they're getting tests at 5:30 at night. It just seems like it makes a lot of sense for those that need it or those that want it. There's, you know, different strokes for different folks, and they all have their own pros and cons, and I'm not saying that any one program is better than another program because that, that would be ridiculous. But I think each program has strengths. And, you know, we've been working really hard with the school district, I feel, and trying to do a really good job, trying to get these kids ready, not, not academically so much, emotionally and socially, be able to attend, be able to help any of those kids that have speech problems, or we do ASQs on them to make sure that where they're supposed to be. And if not, we talk to the other people that can help get the kids what they need. So I would be really interested in seeing, if we're going to have school choice, can we, can we have school choice? Can the Brookline students also?
School, school choice is intra-district, so within the West River Education District, choice amongst the public programs. That would not be expanded to include a private pre-K program.
But a Brookline student, if they choose to, they do it in Townsend all day long for pre-K.
Right, and they can take the voucher for 10 hours and go wherever that 10 hours gets them, but the, the choice doesn't then obligate the district to pay for full-day pre-K at a private pre-K provider.
But my, my thing is why, if they're a Brookline student, if they're Brookline, specifically, if they live in Brookline, why do they have to go to Townsend to get free preschool when they have a publicly funded person? We're not like just doing it out of the box, we're licensed, we follow all the same rules and regulations, we're partners. Why can't they come to Brookline, to us, for the five days? That is my question, why?
I can answer that, because you're not a public school.
Yeah.
That's the legal reasoning, because you're not a public school, you're a private school.
But why are we good enough for 10 hours, but we're not good enough for the...
Right, no, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just giving you the answer to the question, I'm not saying I agree with it.
Right, but if they contract with us for 10 hours, why can't they contract with us for more hours?
It's not what the law allows.
Right.
The state allows 10 hours.
At this time.
So, talk to your legislators, okay? And stay on them. Emily, go ahead, it's Emily Long at, no.
She lives in Brookline.
Oh, there you go, sorry, she's not your rep.
But I don't know if you, I don't know if you have a... Do you have a question out there?
Yes. My name is Rebecca McCullar, and I am the teacher and director of Timpson Hill Preschool in Williamstown, and we have been in the community for 30 years. We're an AC accredited five-star program, and we're less than five minutes down the road from New Brook Elementary. As Tina was saying, we're also, we partner with New Brook Elementary, and we have spaces for 15 children a day, three- to five-year-olds. So I just wanted to let you all know that if pre-K were to move to New Brook Elementary, since 13 of our 21 students currently do come from New Fane and Brookline, that would impact us pretty dramatically. And we are a quality program with licensed teachers, and a lot of social-emotional development happens at our program, a lot of nature play, so there is something in New Fane existing and in Brookline. So I just wanted to introduce myself and let you all know that we are there in the community, and to put something five minutes down the road from us would be very detrimental to us.
Yes?
It's a quick one, because it was on Drew's. Do either of you offer transportation options? I know you had just mentioned something about taking the children on field trips, Tina.
We do all-day transportation for our field trips.
Okay.
But the kids have to get to the school on their own. Parents have to bring them, there's no bus service.
Currently, yes.
Thank you. Not for us either, we don't offer transportation.
I'm sorry?
I got on the posters in my life.
Oh, I thought you saw somebody behind the post, I'm like, oh, I didn't see him.
I'm trying to see people behind the post.
Okay, so at this point, you know, I can, I can ask Bill to work with whoever you think should come from the pre-K programs in the public schools to talk to us, and we can invite, I assume, you two back, as well as if there are other private pre-K programs that should come and discuss at the next meeting, extend that invitation as well. And, you know, we can listen to a little presentation from each of them, and, you know, it's just information. I don't know if there are others. My kids are so far removed from pre-K, I couldn't tell you.
Seventeen.
Seventeen pre-K programs?
Yes. For, for West River?
Go ahead.
Yeah, please, Scotty.
Phil asked me to compile a list of the places where our, our students are going. I think that a lot of that has to do with parent, really about transportation, about ease. You know, people who live in, or live in New Fane but work in Brattleboro sometimes choose a Brattleboro provider, even though Timpson Hill's right there. They would choose that just because they know that when they get off at 5:00, they can go, you know, it's more, I think a lot of it, I mean, I remember when I was raised my kids, it was really about, it was really about, like, how are we going to make this all work with, you know, with big, especially with a bigger family, but they are, they're spread out all over the county.
Is that, yeah, go ahead. Is that true with students from Townsend and Jamaica? Laura, do you know, do Jamaica students go to 17 different locations?
No, no, primarily it's a London Berry way or a Manchester way, and sometimes it's based on where a student, where a student, where a family works, and sometimes it's also based where their sibling is going, like their younger sibling, so convenience, ease of transportation. But we do, we do not, no, less than five.
Do we know Townsend?
No, I mean, as Scotty said, I'm trying to compile in preparation for this. And let me correct myself, 17 is probably the WCSU, but I can, I feel really comfortable that New Brook's got at least four to six, and I know Jamaica's got three, so I'm guessing Townsend's got three or four. We're probably looking at between, on the low end, eight, eight to 12, because it's a, it's a voucher program.
Okay. Scotty, just, just again, really, one of the differences between our schools is that New Fane has a lot of people that work in Brattleboro and, and work, you know, it's, it's not that far, whereas if you live in Jamaica, you know, you're probably not working in Brattleboro. And I think that those are, again, those are the choices people are making just to make their life a little bit easier.
Sure you do.
Right, I understand.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Brown, I live in Townsend, and five years ago, when we moved here, I knew I wanted to live in the Leland and Green district, and I solely moved to Townsend because of the all-day free pre-K program. Like, that was why Townsend wanted to help.
So it sounds like, and I'd be interested to know the data, but it sounds like just because Jamaica has a full day, or Townsend has a full day, parents are still choosing the voucher when it's convenient for their family and going outward. Can we have those numbers, that data available?
That I can.
Alicia, you have a question?
Is this a, is this going to, you're going to make me sound smart or not smart? I'll wait to demonstrate, because it's going to be directed at you, Bill.
Okay, hold on.
No problem.
Okay, go ahead.
Is, is this a, in any way, a situation we can compare to some of the, the high school, like situations in the state where the high schools are being tuitioned to private schools? The high school is like a burn and burn situation, is that at all comparable funding-wise?
No, it's, it's a very specific law that provides 10 hours at the parent's choice. There's two base, there's three basic choices. If you want to participate in the, in the publicly funded system, you can attend a publicly funded pre-K program that exists, or you can take your 10 hours, or you cannot participate.
But there's no way we could utilize that type of a format or dynamic to offer more than 10 hours?
I have not heard of that, but it's possible for me to investigate that. I would say, though, that if you offered 35 hours at one private pre-K, you have to offer 35 hours at every private pre-K.
I guess I was just thinking, oh, okay, so even if New Brook doesn't have their full-time, if they offered more hours to...
If anybody in West River, you offer a three-year-old in West River 35 hours, you can't say only that place.
So it couldn't, it couldn't be our equity by adding hours to New Brook because Townsend and Jamaica full-time? We have to add hours to everybody. Townsend would get more hours.
There is no line anymore. It's a West River student.
Just clarifying that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, no, I understand. Yeah, it would have to be offered differently.
In the district.
She covered it.
She covered it? Okay. So in the district, we already have two public pre-K programs, and the rest are all private. Regardless of what town you're from, in this school district, we currently have...
Correct.
...two in-house...
Yes.
...pre-K programs.
Yes.
We also just passed an intra-school...
Intra-district.
Intra-district school choice program.
We did.
That we can extend out to public pre-K.
You can do that.
Okay. So then, that would cover...
Sorry, it didn't preclude it.
It doesn't preclude it, it wasn't specific.
I was just going to say, we didn't...
We, we're not up to poli, yet, well, we're not up to policy yet, so...
What I'm saying, we didn't state that, that it limited.
Right, no, I'm, I'm just reminding everybody that we have two in the district already.
Right.
Okay, so we're all one district, we're not separate towns anymore. Thank you. Sorry, Ken. I'd just like to clarify the, what Bill was just talking about with the way we enacted Act 66, because we, we did say 10 hours, but we're not, we're not offering 10 hours no matter how, like, we're not saying, how much do you charge for 10 hours, we'll pay you that. We're giving, we're giving a flat, do you remember the figure, Bill?
Thirty-four, 29, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, I should have asked Tina, actually, that would, that would have been. So, so we're offering a certain amount of money, it's, so if you go to a very expensive pre-K or a very thrifty pre-K, it doesn't matter, you get the same chunk from us. So it's just like a stipend more than a, so if we wanted to expand, if we wanted to expand, I would suggest that we don't think of it in terms of hours, I would think of it just in terms of cash.
Can that be done, though, with the private, or is that, that only the public?
I don't think, I don't think I could honestly answer yes or no, but I can look into it. I would, but I would guaran, well, not going to guarantee, I would say it would be highly unlikely that you couldn't offer that to every three and four-year-old, the same opportunity. Your four-year-old and my four-year-old, they, if the board decided to fund 20 hours, and it was legal to do at a private provider, it would have to be any private provider, and it would have to be all students. You can't, you couldn't designate, there's nothing in the law that allows a designation of a private provider. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The, the public ones are in place now. Are they both three and four-year-olds, or just one is...
Currently, Townsend is three and four. Jamaica is four. Jamaica is just four.
Is that going to change?
That's what they're talking right now.
Because like, our program, Princess, is three, four, and five-year-olds.
We haven't made that decision yet. There, somebody, somebody other than you had a hand up in the back, I thought. Somebody have their hand up there?
I have.
No?
Drew.
I'm sorry? You withdrew? Okay, go ahead. You, you go ahead and then Drew.
Just for clarification purposes...
Just for clarification purposes, um, pre-K programs that are existing, are they just for the school day at this point? And would it most likely probably continue that way? Or do, are they expanded for after-hours? Because most parents I know don't get out at three o'clock or whatever time the schools are getting out.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, Jamaica is, the four-year-old program is school day. Okay. And Townsend, three- and four-year-old program is school day, but they are piloting an after-school program right now for this year from two-thirty to five? Does that sound right, Mike?
I think so.
Okay.
And there's a cost, there's an extra cost.
And that is above and beyond the school day, so the school takes care of the school day portion, and parents pay for the two-thirty to five.
Whereas, can you still be, um, they'll allow some parents, um, get out of childcare access.
If, if the facility became subsidy-eligible, it could. But that is a process that has to go through. We just did that for the summer for the explorer's camp at New Brook. But, uh, it is possible.
Oh, Drew, I'm sorry.
Can you explain how the funding comes through for public pre-K programs? Because public pre-K programs are not funded by the voucher in the same way.
Correct. So, a public pre-K program is funded just by the ADM, Equalized Pupil Process. Except a student in kindergarten through eighth grade is worth one, and a student in, that is, three or four is worth point four-six. And so, if it is ten thousand dollars for, uh, equalized pupil, then that would be forty-six hundred dollars. But the equalized pupil, it all goes into the equalized pupil formula, you add up all your kids, and then you get funded at that rate. Does that make sense?
It does to me, but I'm hoping people in the public will understand.
Okay.
Um, so, along with that funding, sorry, the funding that we were just talking about would, so the current program in Townsend and the current program in Jamaica are both fully budget-funded for the school day in the school budget, period.
Correct.
Parents pay zero, or families, whatever, pay zero.
Correct.
Yes?
Bill, a question? Well, the Stars program, I know there are public-private schools do that. Do public schools also?
Uh, both private and public do Star programs.
So, um, the law, I think now, is for, and five-star programs?
Or three with a plan.
A plan to reach four?
Yeah.
Did we not, because we, there was talk about removing the three to reach four, but I think we do not do that.
You have to have a very specific path to get there.
Okay, okay. So that's still a process in place, and?
Yeah, I mean, uh, early learning in Vermont is crazy. You've got the Agency of Education, you've got the Child Development Division, you've got the Agency of Human Services, you've got the Agency of Education, you've got the voucher program, you've got in-house public programs, you've got the Step Ahead, whatever Star stands for, you've got the Vermont Early Learning Standards, which go up to age eight, but then you have the Common Core, which starts at, you know.
It's, but it, but it, one of the challenges around Act one sixty-six is the fact that it's overseen by two agencies.
Oh.
And it has been the Agency of Kidney Services and the Agency of Education, and it has been a true deep challenge to have it overseen.
Really good people, working really hard to make it happen.
Everybody's got the right goals, but it's not working out, and we've taken a lot of testimony on that.
Okay. Yes, Drew?
Can you also, sorry. Do you also look for data as to availability in the private programs for students? So, if all of a sudden we decide we don't want to offer public pre-K, do we have the capacity in our private programs to support that?
No, with the state, for the most part, they're, I just read a report in Wyndham County that there are a shortage, I forget what the number is, I have to go back to the report, but there's a shortage of providers.
Three, well, three and, you kind of have to separate, uh, zero through two, or zero to two and eleven.
Zero to three is the worst.
Kind of backed me up on this, that is very rare, that that, that there's open spots for that. Three and four, because you can have schools as well as independent, you have no spots, but.
There's the vouchers.
So, let me just clarify your question. What you're saying is, let's say that we find that we have nine, uh, private entities. You're just talking about a phone call, like, saying, what's your capacity?
Yeah, what I'm looking at is the question, if we decide we just want to fund this, we're just gonna pay for it, is there even the capacity? Is it possible that we could serve all of our pre-K students by not offering pre-K?
For the ten hours?
No.
Well, start with the ten hours. Do we have the capacity to even absorb the ten hours into the existing programs? And then there's a discussion about, should we pay for more? Let's ask the question.
So private provider capacity?
Is there even a capacity?
That we currently, would that give you enough data?
I think that would be, be helpful to see, maybe we don't even have this as an option.
Okay. I can do that.
What are the current numbers in the publics, the public, um?
At Townsend and Jamaica?
Yeah, what are, what are their numbers for pre-K?
What are they currently enrolled in?
Yeah, like, how many are enrolled in those classes?
I'd have to ask Jamaica.
Eight, eight, eight.
Eight four-year-olds. Townsend is eleven four-year-olds and three three-year-olds, fourteen.
I think we have sixteen.
Right, and then, I mean, if ten people showed up tomorrow, you'd probably find a way to make that work.
I mean, that's what I think about our building, if we, uh, restructure as we need to.
Right.
But, I mean, like, our infant classroom, for, for instance, we have a year waiting list on that. About a year waiting list, never know, right? Yeah.
Long answer, short answer. Three, three and four.
Do we know if there's a lot more kids around that are looking for, are looking for preschool? Do you know what those numbers are?
We average about thirty-six, it's tough to track our three-year-olds, because they're not all in the system. Uh, four-year-olds, I know how much we're paying out, and I know how many we have, so, that's easier. But, uh, just tracking the last three or four years, it's hovering between thirty-four and forty. We're, we're, we're budgeting on a number of thirty-six. But you can have spikes any year.
Any more questions, comments? The only other thing that we, that I heard earlier was surveying parents on this. I'm not sure, is it possible, Bill, to do some sort of, I mean, like?
Well, the four-year-old parents have to talk.
We don't have access to that email, really?
Three-year-olds could be tough to find.
I mean, like, I, I liked the email survey that we did on Choice, it worked, but do we have the access to do that?
Connected tissue of the admin assistant usually at the school of knowing, I know that there's those three-year-olds, I can attempt it, and I, I, I think the survey's fantastic.
Well, I don't think we have to, even have to be right now with the existing kids that are in the schools now. It could just be a general out to
Elementary family.
Elementary families.
Asking them what?
They might ask somebody, tell them?
If.
Well, no, like, seriously, well, what are we asking? We're setting out a question, what are we trying to say?
If private pre-K was an option at New Brook or for New Brook, depending, which they're actually two different questions, because being that we have school choice and we could put pre-K students going to Jamaica and Townsend if they so choose to be in a existing public pre-K program.
So if we're trying to write the survey, what question, or questions, like, one sentence, what are we asking?
Would you take advantage of public pre-K program offered in New Fane?
Versus, versus using a?
Versus, versus, versus your choice of ten hours a day.
Ten hours a week.
A week, rather, sorry, that would be lovely, wouldn't it? Did I say that?
Can you have some kids ten hours a day?
Okay.
I mean, I mean, how, I mean, how would we phrase that? And do, do we want to invest in trying to duplicate what we already have in two other schools?
So are you asking, is it, are you talking about a very narrow questionnaire to New Brook families?
No, no.
No, no.
No, this should be, if we're gonna ask this question, it should be asked of all of our families.
It should be a district question about pre-K.
So what's the question?
Because I guess, I guess, if there were a, a public New Brook pre-K program, and we had choice, somebody from Jamaica could go there.
Right, 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 right.
So, you know, I mean, who do you open?
So is it as simple as if a public pre-K program was run during the school day at three locations, would you participate?
Yes.
Would you participate? Well, one, we have school choice now, so the question is kind of redundant.
I could draft some.
But, yeah.
When we opened up ours, before we opened up, we did a survey to the entire county to see what the need was, and it was a really kind of brief, like, um, do you have an upcoming three- or four-year-old that would, that you would like to send to preschool? Yes or no? Would you like your child to have a minimum part-time? Because some, some parents don't want their kids to go to preschool for forty hours a week. Some parents only want two days, and that's fine. So it was, would you want your child to go part-time? Would you want your child to go full-time? And just keep it very basic like that, and then you can kind of find the needs, and then later on, you can narrow it down to where. When you can add, are you willing to drive if you want? Or does your child need transportation? Without putting him out, but that's before we opened, those are the kind of questions we asked to see what the interest was, and how many kids there were, and what that looked like, what the need was. Then you get it directly from the parents, and they were pretty, pretty responsive.
No, that's true.
How did you get all their contact information? I mean, where do you get the two-year-old?
She went through.
Parent?
I went through the directories.
Go back two years ago in every town, and find out who was born in what town.
It's just really important, I think, that we, we, if we're going to send out a survey that it's all five towns that are part of it, well, four.
I, how about this, how about if I draft you all a survey for you to review?
We'll look at it at the next meeting.
Is that cool?
That works. Sure.
Thanks, Ken.
Put your hand back there somewhere.
I was just gonna say, the way we obtain our numbers is we look back into the town report for birth records, and, um, and then it's just who knows who in the building. And that is, that is the only way we can, um, we do our mailings that way, um, for incoming students, and, um, and then, of course, just a public, you know, a, a public announcement in a newspaper, um, just saying that we're registering for our pre-K students, but we go back through the birth records, and, um, and then who knows who in the town.
Okay.
And we also have a survey up on the website.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I had a question for you about child fund, if that's for three, is that, explain child fund. Where are we?
I don't know, the inner workings of child fund, I can't.
But it's for, it's for children who are special needs, is it child fund?
Uh, early education, tripoli.
Tripoli, it's for tripoli.
We could probably edit that.
So how do we identify children?
Well, I was just thinking, I mean, from what Tina says and what Laura said, child fund. I probably could craft a simple survey, if you guys gave me permission, and then go ahead and do it, because then we might have results by the second. If you, I mean, you're basically looking to find out, if it existed, would you participate and have some? How about this? You have somebody on the board that really, really wants to, you know, say, yes, that survey works?
Joe?
Thanks. Anybody?
I'll do it.
You know, says, yes, you can, I'm just saying, instead of waiting two and a half weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe you should email it to the whole board if they have any comments, because I, I don't feel that you should put it up to one indi, one individual person to say.
All right, but when I send it to you, you're gonna have forty-eight hours in which to comment.
There you go, exactly.
Got it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Bill, check, check your email.
You gotta be careful about board business by email. It's gotta be a committee, or the officers, or some, I'm, I'm a little nervous about the whole board by email.
How about you, you want to review it? Let's have a subcommittee that just reviews this survey. We just don't want to wait three weeks.
I would love to, yeah.
All right, Ken and Joe, you guys are a new committee.
And Drew?
I'll, I'll review it.
Andrew.
Perfect.
Got it?
Got it.
Ken? Thank you.
Yes, Scotty.
One thing that I would imagine, and I, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna generalize, but, um, there are some families that are more likely to move than other families. Um, and I think that such, if there's a way of getting at that in a, in an appropriate manner without being obnoxious, I think that we, we ought to try to tease out, like, people that really plan to, to have their kids in school when they're three and four here in the valley. Because lots of times, like last spring, we, we counted up a lot of kids for our school, and they, some of them moved away. You know, and it's really hard to know. So, maybe if there was some way of, of just asking the parents, you know, do you, do you feel, all right, do you feel fairly sure, or how sure do you feel like, um, you'll still be living in town?
Or, uh, be attending.
What's that?
That your child would be attending.
Yeah.
Yeah. Scotty, go on. All right, so we've got a survey and some sort of presentation from both public and private pre-K providers for the next meeting agenda. According to the timeline plan, we're supposed to make a decision about what we're gonna do in terms of pre-K offering in the district next time, so, I mean, it's not har, it's not carved in stone, but we should think about, you know, that's probably, it'll, it won't, it will say possible action next to early education, um, early learning next, on the next agenda, and it will be possible.
I just want to remind anybody watching the video, or anybody that's here, that the question form is still active, and if you come up with questions or comments, please build it out, and someone will make sure that we see that.
And it's got a nice little thing, says you're talking about early learning.
Yep. So please do that.
Yes. Anything else, early learning, going once? All right. So, we have, uh, with, our next item for discussion is that we need to hold a special meeting. At that special meeting, we need to set a date for our annual meeting.
You got to talk about this sheet?
There's notes from when we were talking about, about it, that were kind of, that were distributed. You know, we need to set our annual meeting date and time. We've talked about sometime after-town meeting, like, the first week in April. You know, it's similar to what the Leland and Gray annual meeting is now, and then our budget vote would be after the annual meeting, um, you know, like, the day after kind of thing. Again, similar to the way the Leland and Gray vote happens now. It would have to be by Australian ballot, the budget part, right?
Yeah.
And it may make sense to do the, um, going forward, well, going forward, it may make sense to try and do directors at that meeting, but right now, we're still on a, on town meeting day for one more year, right?
So.
And then the other possibility for that meeting is, um, that meeting would be in April of 2019, and we had talked about, um, by that point, the state board would have made its final decision on what's going on with school mergers, and the West River public, you know, the, the, the entire district needs to vote on what happens with Wyndham once the state boards made its final decision.
All right, so can we just break this down a little bit?
Sure.
Because there's actually a bunch. So, one, you guys, we did not set a date for the annual meeting at the last annual meeting. We had the annual meeting, it was legal, but we just didn't set a date. Talked about it, but no, we did, we never made a motion, never locked it down. Okay? So, in order to have a date for the annual meeting, this board needs to warrant a special meeting, and at that special meeting, you need to decide on date for the annual. Okay? Now, the annual meeting, as you said, Joe, is gonna occur sometime, the discussion was, it was gonna occur sometime after-town meeting, but close enough to town meeting that if a budget gets rejected, you have time to respond to them. All right, so that's one. You gotta do a special meeting to set the date for the annual meeting, okay?
What's the warning time for the special meeting?
There are thirty days. Also, at that special meeting, you guys talked about the first thing on the top here, which is here, which is where board representatives can get elected from the floor in some towns and not get elected, and get elected by Australian ballot in others. All right? And all you've directed me to do so far was to talk to the attorney about that possibility. And you can see his answer is, you got to direct me to go find that answer. He didn't know. Okay? But either way, you would then be amending the Articles of Agreement, which would have to happen.
Had a special meeting warned for the purpose, right?
The vote to amend the Articles would need to occur at a special or annual meeting of the school district, and then voting by Australian ballot in each town. Okay? Guys understand that?
Well, it's the same ballot, it's just that each town.
You could, if you did it at the same.
At the same time as our annual meeting.
Right, so you could ask that question at the annual meeting, killing two birds with one stone.
Okay.
All right, so we good so far? We got a special meeting to warn the annual meeting. At the annual meeting, you're going to add the regular annual stuff, plus you're going to ask this question about the possibility of, in New Brook, still doing it by Australian ballot, and Townsend electing people from the floor.
And what happens with that large elections?
At-large elections would have to stay Australian ballot because it is all the towns put together.
So why would you run two different elections?
This is what you guys asked me to do, man!
Because this way, we have the choice from the floor, but we still got to go in and vote for that large person anyways.
We'll hear about it in a minute. So just, I want to clarify this, because I'm trying to, the special meeting, the special meeting is where we would warn the next meeting?
Yes.
That would be to amend the Articles that could happen at the annual meeting, but we would have to decide how we were amending the Articles to get things voted, like.
You have to have a special meeting in order to get something on the annual meeting.
That's, well.
Okay, that's, okay.
So I would imagine you'd have a special meeting November, and at that meeting, you would set a date for the annual meeting? You would address this top one here. It would give me time to get the answer from the attorney. If you wanted to warn an amendment to the Articles of Agreement, that's where it would happen.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, Emily, I'm confused.
Yes, Rick.
I'll stand here, so.
He's jumping up and down and waving his arm.
Yeah, I am, because, okay, I'm confused. I'm not too close, Emily. The main purpose of this whole thing with voting is to take the burden off town election officials. Now, if you hold a special meeting in November, you're warning a special meeting, how come you can't put that on November's special meeting? There's the thing about electing from the floor, so that come March, we will not have to hold an Australian ballot election for one person in Townsend, or one seat. I mean, that is waste, because that's what we've got coming up. We've got one seat coming up in 2019. We have to pay people to man the polls all day long. We have to pay people to count, and I don't even know how many people are going to vote. So if you put this on the same, you warn this piece on the same warning in November, you're setting the annual meeting, you're also warning the public to come vote on the change of the.
Yeah, because it can occur at a special annual.
Right, and that way, you can get it accomplished before March. Because if we go into March, and you have to pull an Australian ballot election like this, your town clerks are going to be up in arms. It's just a waste. New Fein does theirs by Australian ballot anyway. Townsend, Jamaica, it's all from the floor. You know, Brookline, it's all from the floor. And nobody's going to be happy with having to sit there at the polls all day long to count one ballot, you know? I mean, so.
You know, I hate to say this, because I don't disagree with you, but the majority of people in Townsend voted for the Articles and state the exact opposite of this. When they voted for this district to combine, so they voted for, yes, we're going to have to go Australian ballot.
Well.
Well, no, they did. I'm just throwing that out there, not that I agree or disagree.
I don't think anybody got to that level of minutia when they were considering the Articles.
I did. I read all 39 pages. I highlighted.
They had thought about the fact that, oh, that'll cause everybody to be on town meeting day with an Australian ballot. Well, all right, I stand corrected. Rick thought of that. I don't think anybody else got that far into it.
But that's just my suggestion, because if, for us, and it's a waste of time, it's a waste of money, and yes, you will be billed for it. I promise you will be billed for it.
That I know.
Yes. Does that, is that possible, Bill?
Well, I'm just trying to think, so what I think you're saying is that this board votes to set a special meeting on November 7th, whatever the day that is. You guys would convene.
But you would call a special meeting of the district.
So this district board would meet, the ballot would be at the polling places in all five towns. At the same time, you guys would actually have to have a meeting and name the time for a annual meeting. But then the vote would be taken care of at the same time on the same day. Is that what you're saying?
So it's got to be done by Australian ballot outside of here?
Because the vote, the vote to change the Articles has to be done by Australian ballot, and the changing is the Articles is the way to get the directors elected from the floor and by Australian ballot, and however they are.
Wait, wait. The vote to amend the Articles needs to occur at a special or annual meeting. So you could warn the special meeting?
Right.
And arrange for the vote, have a warning written for the vote to amend the Articles that would be on a ballot. That's happening, right? And then these guys would meet for a really quick meeting and said, "We want April 2nd to be our meeting date."
Yeah, but does that, does it change the Articles of Incorporate, or the Articles of Agreement absolutely have to be done by Australian ballot, or can it be at a public meeting?
The voting is by Australian ballot in each town.
Definitely.
Okay, okay.
You might have one. Hey, Bill, can I make two suggestions?
Please.
First, take this back to the attorney and figure it out, and also, look at the other merged districts and see what they're doing. I mean, they can't, there's other merged districts around the state. Somebody has got to have done, has got to have figured this out, whether it's going to work or not. Go back to them.
We're not the only ones.
We're not the only ones in this situation. So, I mean, VSA probably has some information. VSBA has it. I'll call VSBA.
We're doing it in River Valleys right now.
I mean, we're reinventing a wheel here that we necessarily have to.
I can figure all that out, so is the will of the board to do that?
Get it done.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I will talk with the attorney, I will find the path, but that means that on October 2nd, you guys got to be prepared to warn the special meeting.
Okay.
Because it's 30 days.
On that note, I'm going to make a public announcement that if Townsend gets to pay their officials for an Australian ballot, you will be receiving a bill from New Fein.
Yeah, I receive bills from every town.
But I'm just letting you know, because.
Bring it up.
Equity.
Leland and Gray pays every town for the Australian ballot. Leland and Gray Board pays every town for the Australian ballot for our annual meeting. You're not getting left out. Don't worry.
Okay, I will take care of that. I will have it all set up and buttoned up for October 2nd. Is that cool?
Yes, Mike.
I was just wondering where this is coming from. I don't, I've been to a lot of meetings. I don't remember us talking about changing the Articles of Incorporation for the, you know, or Articles of Agreement for how we're electing people.
This is driven by, both Jamaica and Townsend currently vote their school board directors from the floor, and the, and Brookline, sorry, and the electorate wants to continue that. As these Articles are written, there will no longer be voting from the floor at town meeting for any position on this board. It all has to be Australian ballot, for at-large and for town. So that would mean, almost every year, every town would be holding an Australian ballot vote to elect somebody on this board because of the way the stagger goes. And the towns that currently vote from the floor would kind of like to stay that way. Okay. So we will be voting on warnings on October 2nd.
So when do you guys want the annual meeting?
First week in April? First Tuesday in April, vote on the Wednesday? Does that work for you?
I like the idea of a Tuesday meeting and a Wednesday vote. I would either do it the last week of March or the first week of April.
So think, if I can.
Yes, please.
Just think about also having to have a pre-information meeting as well, because while the vote is on the day after the annual meeting, there should be a meeting a week prior. So just remember.
Originally, you guys had talked about, could we do that at a town meeting, and then we realized that we couldn't, because it's all certifications. But town meeting will be a good opportunity for you all to be in your town with the budget.
So the week ahead, before an annual meeting, we hold an information meeting at Leland and Gray for our votes? That may not be heavily attended, but I think it's really important to offer it for the communities, so that they have not only that opportunity, but the opportunity at the annual meeting to ask questions.
Yes.
So all I'm trying to say is there's really three events.
They should have the informational meeting, they should have the annual meeting, and then they're going to vote.
I just don't want that week ahead town meeting, information meeting to coincide with something else, because we're not doing it in February anymore. We're doing it in April, so I don't know if there's anything going on.
I don't think there's anything in the last week of March. It's not qualification.
So the first Tuesday of April, or the last Tuesday of March, where do you guys want it?
April. Less chance of me snowed out, I imagine.
Could be really bad, or snow.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Had so many.
I know, I know.
The first Tuesday of April. Does anybody know what day that is?
April 2nd.
Thank you. Band solo festival? You have anything on Wednesday? Guys want to do it on Wednesday and vote on Thursday? You want to meet on Monday and vote on Tuesday?
So here's what I.
April Fool's Day.
Say to you, I think it's really important that we're not confusing. This is common. The folks who are voting on the West River budget and voting at the West River are the same people who voted for Leland and Gray. Now, I know they're voting on something completely different, but they're the same voters we're trying to reach, right? So the more we can make it the same, the better turnout we'll get, is my thought. I'm not, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm just trying to make it easier for voters to remember, to address this, because we are changing the month of this, and I think that will be a welcome change.
Tuesday and Wednesday is good.
It is.
How about the 26th, Phoebe?
Well, wait, wait, wait. It's a band program, probably in the gym, right?
It's sort of a district festival thing.
So is it? Is it going to use every available space?
No, but families are going to.
Parents won't come. That's where I'd go.
That's where I'd go.
Me, too.
Absolutely.
How he's doing the lights?
Is this an annual thing?
This is an annual, no, it's.
No, it doesn't sound.
The district band thing is not an annual thing. It's always going to be the first Tuesday in April, right? We just run into the conflict once.
Yeah, you just said the day, I looked at the full curricular calendar or something, but that and families. The first is open, the third is open, the 26th?
26.
Nothing booked.
So the last. Yeah, I mean, we set our annual meeting date. It's our annual meeting date going forward forever. So are we the last, the last Tuesday in March?
I'd be happy with that.
Instead of the first Tuesday in March, and then we vote the Wednesday?
That gives us three weeks after town meeting. March now becomes the moment, right? So you know that you have town meeting at the beginning, and you got the vote at the end.
All right. I can live with that.
We're going to have March Madness t-shirts.
Well.
Right.
20, 26th?
26th.
Put it on the calendar.
If it doesn't work out for our voters, it'll be the only the first one.
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. Every year?
Do it this year, ever.
Well, it should be, it should go forever. I mean.
Yeah, put it the next two years.
We don't.
Well, it's not going to be the same date. It's going to be the same.
The last Tuesday.
The last Tuesday of the month. Make that clear.
Yeah, it'd be the last Tuesday in March every year.
It'll be floated.
March 26th, last Tuesday of March. It will be in the gym.
Which gym?
It'll be in the big gym.
The main gym.
Main, not Dutton Gym.
Not Dutton Gym. And you noticed, I didn't put Dutton.
I noticed that. That's why I told you, you know, I don't want to. Okay, so that'll be on the warning, and we'll vote on the whole warning next meeting, and you will also have the other special meeting stuff figured.
I'll have it all prepared.
Beautiful. Moving right along. So we've talked about since the retreat, that was the other, it's actually still a piece of this, right? We're talking about warning another, we're talking about at our annual meeting, perhaps adding to the annual meeting a piece of voting on.
Yeah, so at the retreat, the board had a representative from Wyndham, Kathy, very nice lady, and she respectfully asked the board to not, remember, the attorneys had suggested, getting really high input would be to do it in November, and she respectfully asked for you guys to consider doing it after November 30th, after the State Board of Education had made their decision. And so then, the board said, "Okay, let's, when would the next natural time be?" And that's where we are. So when we talked about the special meeting, it was, do you kill multiple birds with one stone and have that vote at one of these times, same time?
So at the same time that we voted on our budget, which would be the Wednesday after our annual meeting, so March 27th of 2019, we would add a question to the ballot that said, "Should the West River Education District," assuming that the State Board of Education recommended that Wyndham join with us, we would have a vote on the ballot because we have to ask the electorate whether or not they want to accept Wyndham into the district. So that, that was where it made sense, because the Board of Education had made their decision in November, and there would be time to discuss the pros and cons of it, there would be time for Wyndham to talk to the people that were voting and whatever, and the vote could be held then, and we were meeting, we were having an Australian ballot vote then anyway. So that was the, that was the thinking. Howie? Sorry, I couldn't see.
I would respectfully like to table this discussion until after the state makes their decision, and this winds its way, legal challenges to this are resolved. I would tell you right now that everybody is lawyering up and waiting for the state to make their decision. So I think that scheduling a vote on this is premature. When the state comes up, down, when this decision comes out, and the legal challenges are resolved, I think it's doubtful. So as your neighbor representing the people of Wyndham, I respectfully ask this board, just let this slide until we work out. The doctrine of this is only going to inflame a lot of people in Wyndham. We're all friends here. We've been cooperating for 50 years.
Could I ask clarification?
Sure. So, one, I just wanted to point out that the board was just acting on a recommendation from a representative of Wyndham, and so you're asking for new information. So.
A new accommodation.
A new accommodation. So I would just say, from my perspective, they haven't, they're not trying to make any decision to upset them. This is the first time they've heard this request. So I just.
So, and just to clarify the request, the state board's final decision, you would want us to postpone any action on whether. us to postpone any action on whether we would accept or not accept Wyndham until Wyndham's finished its litigation on this. So probably two or three years down the road.
That could be years.
Maybe five years down.
Well, it might be, I don't know, how long it takes to wind this way.
Well, if you're really making a federal case out of this, like I've seen some of the, like, some of the documentation, there's probably a two to three-year timetable for that litigation to even begin to play out.
Correct.
And you would like us to wait that much time?
Yeah.
And during that, we're just going to make decisions and move forward with our district, and then at the end of it all, when Wyndham comes in, you'll just happily jump in and-
Well, there's no, there's no saying that we-
If that were to happen. If that were to happen, you would have all that time where you weren't a part of us and we would just be marching on without you?
Correct. Yeah, we would be running our own, our own school, the way we've been doing for 200 years. Happiest plans up in Wyndham for our own elementary school and our school board, we voted against joining this. All we're asking for is that you guys respect our wishes. And if it does play out that we are forced, we exhaust our legal options, we exhaust everything else, and we have to come in and be a full part of this, I'd like to, you know, think that we have some goodwill toward this board because you are respectful to us. And the respectful thing to do is to respect our vote and let this thing sit until we have finished Wyndham. So that's my, that is my request of this board. I think you guys have plenty on your plate without stirring up another hornets' nest motion.
Wouldn't it be easier if we just voted you off the island now?
Well, that's, we should act, that's the question about that. This board has been in extent for, it's been a legal entity for one year, correct?
Yeah, we're a legal entity, but we're not running schools yet. We're not operation.
Are you a public, is this board a public? Yes, it's a, it's a public entity.
We are elected.
They are a school district.
Because we have, because the 701, section 701G says, one year from the date of formation of this, we can have a vote to remove ourselves from it.
Yeah, you have to March 31st, 2018.
Yeah, so we have to wait, so as we add, add a year from that, so March 18th is when the, this was-
That was when that year ran out.
That was the, so we are free at this point to, you know, have a vote to withdraw ourselves from this board and simplify everything for everybody.
No.
No, a year after.
A year after that.
Yeah, so essentially.
So March 9th, so the 2019, we could vote to-
So when you have a mud vote, if the school district that does not vote to enter, they have a full year to reconsider that and join.
I'm talking about something completely different. I'm talking about seven, the section of education law that allows town, just like Jamaica was considering removing themselves from the union districts. Because that mechanism still exists to remove themselves, move towns from this district. So Wyndham can have a vote to withdraw ourselves from this union district, from our 7 to 12.
Yes.
We can have a vote, and then the other towns would have to vote to let us out, and that would clean up everything. You wouldn't have me sitting here as voter on some things and not others. You would not have to break apart your high school budget and your other budgets. It would clarify everything. It would make things quite simple. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things that are coming up, which is why, again, I'm going to make a motion that we table this State Board vote until things get resolved.
I'll second that.
I think you have to clarify that. I think things get resolved is far too vague.
Okay, so I will make it until court, the relevant court cases work their way through this.
So, damn, I'm feeling, I'm feeling uncomfortable. I don't, I'm not opposed, I'm not trying to say I'm opposed, but I'm just saying, I don't know what this means. I don't know what the impact is on this district, this West River modified, unified, unified union district, and I need to know that before I can support.
I agree, I would like a point of clarity.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure he's going to be able to answer questions, and I'm not even sure what I can ask those questions yet. I want to make sure we're not impacting the people we represent in our, in our West River District by, by voting on this tonight.
Sure, so you could, there's nothing that says that you have to vote on this tonight. We were simply doing this because the special meeting was on. And I can simply ask our attorney, your attorney, whether they know of any implications, questions to ask, things of that nature, report back on October 2nd. There will be no vote, so that nothing, no action would be taken from now until October 2nd. I just don't know what questions you have for implication.
So, so let me just follow up then. What if, what if we did do a vote? Now, the vote that we are supposed to be doing, we offering to the communities, whether they allow Wyndham in.
The wording is accept.
Right.
Accept.
So what if, so even-
You are not. You are asked to.
We, so who's asking?
So right now, where it stands right now is the-
Okay, this is important.
Yeah, absolutely. The Secretary of Ed-, the interim Secretary of Education made a recommendation in the report that was required by June 1st of 2018 to ask the West River Board to accept Wyndham as a member of the West River Education District. Okay? That is the recommendation from the Secretary of Education. The State Board of Education is now deciding what parts of that recommendation, what part of that plan they will accept or not accept or change. The ultimate authority lies with the State Board of Education. They have to give a plan by November 30th. And if in that plan it asks West River to accept Wyndham, then you all have to decide if you want to.
Well, not us, our communities.
The electorate.
Well, you have to decide if you want a vote.
We have to decide if we want to ask.
No, no. The district.
That's not what he said.
So the board, the board gets to report, to call the vote. We don't, if this board doesn't call the vote, it's not, there's no acceptance.
That's not what Joe just said. So you two are in the same-
So what I'm saying is that the language says, does the West River Education District accept Wyndham?
So we, the board, are not the West River-
No.
The electorate is.
You would have, the advice from the attorney is to ask that question, is to have a vote of your tenant.
So we don't get to choose as a board?
No.
You don't choose as a board.
We have to ask the town.
What the clarification, though, is, do you have to ask your tenant?
Well, I'm looking at the district.
When the State Board of Education says, if they say, right? What is the role of the board? I can absolutely ask.
That's a question you should ask.
I can ask that clarified question.
The other, I guess the other thing that I'm a little confused about is what happens after November, this isn't really about Wyndham, this is really about, and this is a question for an attorney, about any school district that is merged against their wishes, I guess, is what I would say, the day after. Are they expected, I mean, now, maybe there's a lawsuit and-
There's definitely going to be a lawsuit.
I'm just saying, even with that, does that just put everything on hold?
Depends on what the lawsuit is. If there's an injunction.
So that's what I'm asking, because I think all of those things are important when we're having this conversation and trying to decide what we should do. Also, if we voted, if we put it out there for a vote, does that bind the Wyndham decision? It wouldn't preclude Wyndham from still saying, we're not doing it, even if the others said they would accept them, right? If they're-
So let's hypothetically, let's say that there are no lawsuits, and Wyndham is asked to go in, you guys hold a vote, and all five communities vote to accept them in, yes, all five, but it's a 51%.
Aggregated?
Yes, aggregated vote.
51%.
51%. Then I would assume it would be the legal obligation of the Wyndham School District to dissolve on June 30th, 2019, and to become part of July 1st, 2019, of this. Why else would you, why else would there be a lawsuit unless you are against something? You have to be against something, and you're being against the force, in this way, it's a forced acceptance. So I'll, I can, I'll talk that all through the attorney. I think Howie brings up a really good point about all these things are moving, let's find out what, what we're talking about.
We have a question here, and I have a, I still need my clarification.
I just wanted to basically say, like, why wouldn't we want to give our brothers and sisters in Wyndham the chance to let their options play out, you know, and not unduly influence them by us trying to get a ballot vote together in advance?
By you saying, by saying to the State Board, oh, well, they already accepted them in, in those towns. They have, you know, it's, it's all political game. Let them lie until they decide what they want to do.
But the November 30th date is the date where everything shifts, though. It's not just some-
They have a recommendation.
Right. Then the next step's, but I mean, I think that's why I think I need to know.
That's going to trigger the lawsuits because you can't, you can't sue until somebody does something, right? Until they injure you.
Right, they haven't been injured yet.
Exactly. If injury hasn't occurred, it's still all talk.
So can I propose that I just have this kind of conversation with the attorney and then report back to you guys?
That'd be great.
Is that cool?
Okay. I still need a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
Due to our vote that we had for the sixth grade last year, or last, this last meeting on September 11th, I should remember the date, we voted that sixth graders would be going up to Lehman and Gray.
Yes.
Will that, or will that not affect Wyndham? Because when this board was started, it shouldn't have.
So I will, I will ask the attorney that question, but in my brief conversations with the attorney about the preparations of people voting and not voting, that question can't be answered until exactly what Howie talked about, until then other question's answered. Because right now, Wyndham is a separate K through 6 district. And as long as that district is in existence, they are a K through 6 district. But if Wyndham went away, there would be no K through 6 district. There would only be the West River Education District, and this board decided that sixth graders would attend Lehman and Gray in the West River Education District. So in many ways, it's a moot point. If you're a member of the West River Education District, sixth graders-
Those sixth graders from Wyndham have to go to Lehman and Gray next year.
No.
Correct?
Or can.
No, no sixth graders from Wyndham. Finish the phrase.
Right. Well, in other words, Wyndham will still have sixth graders. They will not come up to Lehman and Gray.
So what I would say is until, as long as Wyndham School District exists.
As long as Wyndham School District is still in effect.
Yes, yes.
You can't touch their sixth graders.
That is correct. I'm not trying to touch their sixth.
No, nobody may.
That is a horrible phrase!
Well, no, because-
It is.
Yeah.
And it's unfair.
I don't understand. Let's get that clarified.
Well, no, I'll tell you why. Because I asked that question at the last meeting, and all I got was, he's not allowed to vote because this is-
Until that question's answered, we don't know.
A middle school, this is a high school question, okay? It may be a high school question, but it involves a sixth grade, and that's why I asked. Because if you were going to move them up, then it would affect him and he would have a vote. And that's why I asked that question.
You've got it backwards. It's an elementary school question, not a high school question, which is why he's not allowed to vote. Because Wyndham runs their own K-6 elementary school program until Wyndham doesn't. And so the sixth grade moving is an elementary school issue, which is why Howie was precluded from voting. And his, and Wyndham students, K through 6, will stay right where they are now, next year as well, because our decision as the West River District does not affect the Wyndham K-6 district that exists.
No, but it-
Yes.
It does, no, but it does, no, but it does, excuse me, I'm not saying, no, that's not true. No, but it does affect the education of their middle schoolers.
Yes, it does. Because their sixth graders start, because they don't come here till seventh grade. That's correct. But that's a choice that they made.
No, that's not why. What I'm talking about, it still will affect their seventh and eighth graders. It'll affect their ninth graders, their 10th graders.
Because they come a year late?
No, because we, because now high school has sixth graders. We, you know, we signed up for a 7 through 12.
The vote affects both sides.
Yeah.
Yes, no matter how, you can say whatever you want. It does affect them. Whether it's adverse or to their advantage, it affects them.
Okay. Mike, you had something you wanted to add?
I was just going to talk to, there was a motion and a second, so like, what are we going to do with that?
That's, that's my job. Thanks.
But, well, we could amend the motion or whatever.
Just, you know, I just want a clarification on that.
I wasn't sure we were done discussing it, but there is a motion on the floor, and, you know, I don't, you can either, you know, there's not going to, there's not going to be any decisions made, you know, you see what, you know, nothing's trying to get railroaded here.
So circle around, can you just table this Wyndham vote thing on the agenda? I need to table it.
I'll second that.
If you table, you're going to have to do some to-
Why do I have time?
I don't think you can table indefinitely. I think you have to have it.
Then we have to have it on the next agenda as well, because tables tell a certain date.
So he can answer.
Okay.
So you're with me?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my first motion and I'll, I can table this.
You have to draw a second.
When I withdraw my second, and then I'll put another second in.
Okay.
Table it to the next.
Right. There's no second on table. It's just you're voting, you're, you're making a motion to table the Wyndham vote discussion until the next meeting. Perfect. No second necessary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. I'll put that on the next agenda, too. Okay, so the policy committee met tonight to start hashing out the school choice policy. Is there anything at this point that you want feedback from the entire board, or you just want to keep working and talk to us at the next meeting, feedback from the entire board?
Don't even know if we'll have it ready for you concretely to even discuss it at the next meeting, but we will be meeting again prior to our next school board meeting here, and we are moving along rather nicely.
But you don't need any input from the whole board at this point?
Unless there's anything that you're really, really worried about that you want to guide the, us poor policy people, we're all ears.
I trust you. That's why you're the policy committee. We'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting as well, and just in case you want to, you know.
We'll keep you updated.
Ask us about things that you might want to input from the whole board. Okay, so at the last meeting, you guys tasked me to reach out to Rich to talk about the fact that we all meet on the first and third Mondays and how, how that was going to go. And lately.
We weren't always.
We weren't always, we were on Tuesdays, we moved to Mondays, and-
No, I meant, we weren't twice a month. We were twice a month.
Right, we weren't twice a month.
We were not on the same night.
So we're looking at during budget season probably meeting, you know, we generally during the budget development season have met both the first and the third, or however, you know, both meeting, possibly meeting dates. So I talked to Rich about how we could work that out, you know, because we'll all want the services of the superintendent and the business manager. And his first response was, well, that's simple, move your meetings. We had Mondays first. We had Mondays first. So, then we worked through that, and the compromise that we came up with was that maybe we could move our meeting to start a half an hour earlier, and we would have Bill and Lori for the first hour, hour and a half, and then they would move on and be with West River. He did seem to think that he might not need you for both nights, but they were, his board was pretty adamant about not moving their meetings off of Mondays, and we were welcome to move, hey, welcome!
Hi!
We were welcome to move our meetings to another night, but they were pretty, they were sticking to Mondays.
There's four Mondays. Because there's four Mondays.
Well, we could take the second and the fourth, but I don't know if that conflicts with somebody else. Townsend, maybe? No?
It'll conflict with somebody, but none of you people. None of you.
New Brook and New Fay and Brookline are Thursdays, so...
That won't work. We can't, we can't split it. I mean, look, look at the clock. It's nine o'clock.
True. All right. So, for the two months of budget season, do we wanna go second and fourth Mondays versus first and third?
If we decide, now, I'm not against us moving, but if we do move our nights, next time, they owe us a concession that they'd better move.
That would be some...
And that's, you know, I don't care if Rich Warner is the chairman of the whole SU board, okay?
What's the minute mark?
I believe we were actually active five minutes before they were ASU board. Just throwing that out there.
Can you send that over to him?
Oh, please don't. It's just a beautiful quote.
So, can I just ask a question?
Sure. Ask a question.
When we were, I mean, I would say, we were meeting once a month. Which Monday were we meeting?
You guys were the third, they were the first, and then both of you guys started adding.
Okay. So, we were always the third.
And then, all of a sudden, I needed to be at all.
We were always the third, let's keep the third Monday, definitely.
Do third and fourth.
I mean, I, it makes no sense for us not to keep that date, and then just fill in for the next, you know, however...
The turnaround's tough. A week, I mean, this was rough.
Well, I'm saying, they said they only need you once.
What if we did, what if we met the third Monday of every month and stuck with that as our normal meeting date, and then for budget season, instead of adding the first Monday of every month, we did like a Wednesday in there somewhere? Wednesdays are usually fairly open.
Why don't we, why don't we say, we're keeping the third Monday for after the budget...
If you just did it for two months, I'd have no problem with that.
I'm just saying, for after budget season will be the third Monday, but what, during budget season, we'll do the second and fourth, because we need to be twice a month, and it's conflicting. So, for the next two months, we do the second and fourth, and then we go back to the third, but we've always done.
That, I, that's the kind of solution I'm looking for. So, November and December, second and fourth. The fourth is probably not gonna be really well attended. I'm guessing it's like the 23rd, 24th. Right? The fourth Monday of, what is it?
22nd.
22nd?
27th.
27th? Oh, yeah.
Well, that's my birthday, I can't come.
It's a big night. A lot of people are coming.
I see, I see that as a well-attended meeting.
I think you do the second and the third in December.
Maybe.
Yeah.
All right, so, we'll at least do second and fourth in November, and then we'll figure it out, we'll be a little flexible.
Second and fourth in November, you're committed.
Right. And what is the fourth Monday in November?
Is that Thanksgiving? Is it a Monday?
Yeah, it's a Monday, but it's Thanksgiving week.
I can do it.
26th of November. Oh, no, it's after Thanksgiving. It's after Thanksgiving. Yeah, we're fine. We're fine. All right, so...
Will we get quarts?
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, I'm asking the board, because I, we're changing our...
I'm telling you, I won't be here December 27th. It's my 40th birthday, I will not be here.
Oh, no, that's fine. We probably won't meet that day anymore.
I'm not, yeah, things that we all have. So, we're talking the 12th...
We're talking November...
The 26th.
And 26th.
And then December...
Uh, December...
The 10th and the 24th.
The 10th and not the 24th.
Not the 24th.
No, we're not gonna do Christmas.
24th is Christmas. Yeah. Okay, so, we have to have our budget done by then anyway, right?
We could probably pull a meeting in somewhere in that week.
Because I can't do the 12th, and I can't do the...
All right, that's awesome.
Well, even if you don't have the quorum, you can still have a meeting as long as you don't have a vote.
Okay, so, we've got the dates figured out.
Okay, so, it doesn't have to be, we have to have a quorum.
We've only got a couple of people missing, the 10th.
The 10th.
Yeah, and then if we have to put in something the week after that, we probably...
Wait, if December, we're done a month?
Just the 10th in December so far.
The 12th and the 26th of November.
Yeah.
And the 10th of December.
And the 10th of December.
Okay.
And then if we need something the following week in December, at that point, we'll know.
And still at 7:00.
And still at 7:00, and still right here, and we've got our compromise. Okay. I don't think we need a motion, right? We just, we just agree that it's gonna happen, and it's done. Good.
Just sorry, I don't mean to complicate it anymore, but when we do our annual meeting, do we set the date of our regular board meetings, or do we just do that for our regular board?
That gets set every time when the board reorganizes.
So, is that the only time we go, we don't mention at the annual meeting at all?
No.
Board meetings. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we welcome public input at our regular meetings on the third Monday of the month.
Did we say that?
You did.
We tell them when it is, but we said it at the reorganization meeting.
Correct. You were just making a public statement at the end.
I just want, so we actually did say that, the third Monday.
You did. Third Monday, yeah.
We need to stick to that.
Okay.
So, I guess, or are we sending you back to him again? Is that what it is? Are we...
No, 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 we're, we're out of the conflict now, we're good. Okay. So...
We're still the 13th Monday.
So...
Oh, we're not.
Not in November.
For two months.
For two months.
Like I said.
Okay. All good?
All good.
Under new business, middle school transition updates. Bob wasn't able to be here tonight, I don't, but he did send me an email and say, you know, first of all, he said, well, it's only been a week, but they have a, they have a large checklist of to-dos. They are working with the various principals to set up meetings with the current fifth and sixth grades, and there's a draft of a letter at this point to the families, both explaining what's going on and asking for input in the process. So, that's where they are in a little less than a week with the middle school transition update. I know on our, this is gonna be an item on the agenda going forward, because we're gonna watch this, because it's such a, it's such a important issue. So, the next one will be probably much more detailed, because there'll be a lot more time that's, that's passed, and Bob will be here to do it himself and actually answer questions.
And that'll be on October 2nd, every meeting or something?
It'll be on the agenda at every meeting, yeah. Okay. Do we wanna take up the Career Center Board Representation thing under new business? Or we can just put it on the next agenda, because it's nine o'clock?
I've got it on the October 2nd.
Okay. I do, too, but I just wanted to ask. Okay, so, we should, we should take the consent agenda ahead of the executive session, because we do need an executive session.
So, you guys just got the minutes, so I would suggest that you just put them on October 2nd, and we do October, we do the 11th and the 17th on October 2nd.
That'd be good.
Works for me. Make a motion to postpone, table the consent agenda to October 2nd. All right, Drew moved. Is there a second? Emily seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Beautiful. Okay, we do need to talk about the negotiations with the teachers' union for the new master agreement for the West River District. So, we need a motion to go into executive session for a move.
Actually, we won't have anything afterwards.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
No.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of going into executive session to discuss a contractual matter, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.